Can you call roles?
Uh, Mr. Silva?
Here.
Guy?
Yeah.
Mr. Edwards?
Eric.
Mr. Wader?
Yeah.
Mr. Mr. Evans and Mr. Winter will not be.
Okay, we will start with a moment of silence and then we will do pledge of allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So do any members have any comments on the agenda? Move forward on those. We have minutes to approve. From uh. Meeting November twenty second. We have a motion to approve or comments?
Motion to approve.
Do a second?
Second.
All in favor approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Minutes are approved. The first item we have is the planning commission letter for the township at Sawmill Road for the stormwater grant.
I think maybe I could just, it's probably just a real informal uh presentation. We, the township is applying for a grant application to create the um. Small water and sewer project or grant program for the uh the state. Basically, we're seeking money uh to assist in installing additional stormwater. Uh infrastructure in and around the Sawmill uh road and two fifty-two um to the benefit of uh improving existing drainage issue that's there. And then also to help us integrate into future plans for sidewalks, other improvements on Sawmill. And then also that chunk of property at the corner of. Two fifty-two and Sawmill, uh the township owns and is going to be developing into some recreational facility. Um so it it we're seeking uh some funding from the state to help and um. Really, it's just a procedural item in the application is a recommendation from the planning commission um that the that seeking stormwater improvement monies is uh. Consistent with the township's plans.
Does it involve the uh lake and the dam that used to to be there?
Uh, no, this is the, this is um. The area uh that this grant is focused on is just at uh near the area, the intersection of Route two fifty-two and Sawmill Road. Um, there's an existing drainage bonding issue on the road and we're going to be making these improvements. Uh, so this would just be part of.
Okay, do we, any uh comments? Public comment, anyone? We have a motion to approve the request, but I guess request the grant?
Uh, just the.
Or is it just?
Just recognizing that you're in support of uh some application, that's all.
I guess I'll, I'll make a motion that we indicate that we're in support of it.
We are in support of getting money.
Yeah, it's free money.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hosted for free money.
Thank you.
And then next up, the Delaware County Christian School. And are you here officially or is this just kind of a presentation?
Uh, we're here officially.
Okay, good. Want to see if the clock's ticking or we're just talking.
Good evenings. My name is Todd Petros. I'm a attorney representing the Delaware County Christian School. Which is seeking preliminary final land development uh plan approval to construct building additions to the existing high school and the and Lowry Hall, which has uh administration. Uh at a sixteen acre property at four sixty-two Mallon Road uh and a seventy-eight site improvements. With me this evening are Jim Vino, who is director of strategic initiatives. And Jake uh Cadino, who is director of operations. Uh, we also have Rick Stratton, who is sitting with me, who will do most of the presentation. From Chapter Valley Engineers, he's a senior project manager, and Jake Valenski, who is the AOS architecture, the project architect. And we have a review letter from the township engineer from Penone Associates. We have a review letter from the uh the arborist, the township arborist. And we have a review letter from the fire marshal and we will address all of those. Uh, we're seeking your recommendation of approving the point supervisors. There are two minor waiver requests that you're, which are fairly typical way requests that I'll let Rick address during his presentation.
Thank you, Don. So I'm going to introduce the project uh here to the commission. Good evening. Um, Delaware County Christian School, this property is at four sixty-two. Mallon Road um in the township. It's a sixteen acre uh parcel and it is currently. Uh improved with academic buildings, uh some administration buildings, a student union building, a gymnasium. There's existing parking lots, athletic fields, and some other small buildings on the site for equipment storage. Access into the site, there are four driveways or access points coming in off of Mallon Road. Each of those four are one-way. There's no proposed changes to any of those driveways with this project. There's also one driveway into a parking lot off of Goshen Road. The site, um, there's some mature trees around the perimeter of the site as well, and then there's some smaller trees around the perimeter that have been installed over the years with other uh land development applications. There's also a courtyard uh in the middle of the the buildings that are on the site, and there's a cluster of buildings. On the southern side of the site and in the middle of those buildings, there's a, an existing courtyard. Uh, just to summarize, the parking for the site, there are two hundred and sixty-seven existing parking spaces. The parking demand for the site, the peak parking demand is really driven by when the auditorium or and the gymnasium are full. And so when those two spaces are full, that equates to a requirement for two hundred and fifty-nine parking spaces. The site has two hundred and sixty-seven, so it's adequately parked. Uh, the site complies with zoning currently. Uh, there is a, there was a variance in nineteen ninety-eight for building height. Uh, so there is a, there is a building on the site that exceeds the forty-five feet. Uh, it is fifty feet. And that was uh granted in nineteen ninety-eight. This project does not introduce any additions over the forty-five feet that's required. Uh, so this project is introducing several building additions. Described as infill. Uh, two of the additions, there's various additions on on various buildings. Two of the additions are on the high school. Uh, and those are in categorized as infill. You can see on the screen, there's shaded areas. Uh, there's two of them on the existing high school and those are um in the courtyard area. There's also another building addition uh which will connect the uh Lowry. Hall and the Lowry annex. That's another gray area that uh is shown on the plan there, which is a building addition. And then there's a very small building addition. On the uh Lowry annex, uh like an entry, an entryway addition. Also with this project, there's going to be some improvements in that existing courtyard that I described earlier. Sort of a re-certain modernization of that courtyard area. The walkways will be torn up and then put back in in various, in a different layout. Some seating walls, some other hardscape areas, uh some landscaping in that courtyard area as well. So with this land development application, um and with the introduction of new impervious area, I just want to summarize real quickly the uh. The the coverages on the site. The existing building coverage right now is nine point eight percent. This project will take that up to ten point one nine where fifteen percent is allowed. For impervious area, the existing site has forty-seven point seven percent impervious cover. This project will bring that up to forty-eight. Where fifty percent is allowed, so we're still under the max impervious. And then I spoke more about building height. Uh, there's. There's no addition that's going to exceed the forty-five, which is allowed, but there is an existing building on site that is fifty that was granted by variance in nineteen ninety-eight. Uh, the project does not introduce any new parking spaces. The project is adequately parked. Uh, the site is adequately parked. There's some proposed landscaping in the seat walls, as I have mentioned before, and there's some stormwater management proposed as well. In the southern corner of the site, there's an existing parking lot and underneath that parking lot, we will. Uh, install a new subsurface stormwater management basin that's to offset the impervious cover that's being added to the site.
Well, will it discharge?
Yeah, we'll discharge to an existing pipe network that's on the site now.
What's total square footage of new improvements, the three?
New impervious improvements, uh total proposed is. Thirteen. Thirteen thousand square feet.
What does the existing courtyard look like?
But right now it's um, there is con- you know, concrete and some um, I believe there's some uh. Haved areas for, you know, walkways. Um, it's a little outdated and so to sort of modernize it. They're kind of reconfiguring the layout.
What's a total uh disturbed area? The plan shows a large area that appears. That you don't really improve, so I I understand that maybe you innovate the existing surface.
So the total disturbed area is point nine acres on the screen. Now, there's a sort of a dash line which envelopes the disturbed area. Most of that is the courtyard. Okay, another big chunk of that is the existing parking lot where we're installing stormwater management. All that area added up is point nine acres.
So you don't reach one acre?
Correct. Correct.
You go back to the thirteen thousand square feet, the review letter references twenty-seven hundreds.
Well, I think he was entering the amount of impervious surface.
I was actually, no, I was actually asking building area.
I know.
Oh, okay, yeah, building is not thirteen thousand.
It looked like it.
Yeah, building is two two thousand seven hundred thirty-five square feet, building footprint. And then there's ten thousand. New impervious area for the courtyard improvements.
Okay, yeah, I thought, I thought the question was building, building area.
Yeah, building areas about twenty-seven hundred and.
That's twenty-seven hundred square feet on all floors.
No, that's just building footprint.
Footprint.
Yeah, uh, square footage floor-wise, I'll have to refer defer to the architect to answer.
Six thousand roughly five years. Six thousand square feet.
Six thousand square feet.
Yeah, interior space.
So he's entering foot, he was entering foot fresh with the total interior space.
Yeah.
We've received review letters from the township engineer, the arborist and the fire marshal. Uh, I've had conversations with the engineer and the arborist. I haven't talked to the fire marshal. Uh, his comments are are very simple to address. Um, but I did want to reach out and I spoke to uh the township engineer and the arborist already about their review letter. I'd like to just quickly highlight several of the comments in the review letter, just to explain to the commission here how we're going to address them. And and sort of echo what my conversations were with the uh with the engineer.
And Rick, did you cover the two minor waivers?
Yes, I'll talk about the waivers first. So the the two waivers we're asking for is for preliminary final approval. Instead of uh a two-step process, we're going for a combined preliminary final approval on land development. The other waiver we're asking for is for HDPE pipe in lieu of concrete pipe, which is a very typical waiver we asked for. But those are the two waivers we're seeking. And uh upon review, uh no other waivers uh were were identified by the engineer. So I'd like to go over. About five of the comments in this, in the Penone letter and just kind of explain to you, um, you know, how we're going to address those with a revised plan. The first comment I'd like to talk about is zoning comment number two in the review letter. That's at the bottom of page one. This, this project will not uh result in an increase in school population or enrollment. It's really to improve the uh, the space in which they do their programming. So there is uh no, no increase in school population and therefore, you know, we. We stand by that the parking is adequate and no additional parking is required.
I guess a general question relating to that is, I I suppose the architect will talk about that. What is the purpose of these additions?
We, we can, we can talk about that if you'd like.
Just in general.
We're happy to, we can actually have someone from the. There's a, there are a number of existing functions that have inadequate space. So for example, there might be a new language lab. So there's already languages being taught. They just don't have an appropriate place to teach that. They did have at some point some uh classrooms in the basement. That's just not appropriate.
So these are not new classes for new students.
There, there are some, some new programs that they have, but they have those programs right now. They just have this something called an innovation program. Same students who were attending the other classes, but they, they, they weren't feeling a special room where they can go for this innovation uh program. It's that sort of thing. The head of school right now does, does not have an office, so they, the existence there does not have, the guy has own office, does not have. So it's just to improve the functionality of things you already take.
So that would address zoning comment number two in the engineering review letter. Also, uh, comment number three, under zoning, because there's no parking lot being constructed or built, uh, there's no parking lot lighting proposed as part of this application.
Uh, no new lighting, like no placing existing.
Can I just ask the uh. Ask for, uh, go back to two.
Yes.
The test under one seventy-two dash one thirty-two for an increase that would require. Additional upstreet parking. What's the metric there? Is it number of students? Is it?
Well, I think the um. In this case, they have the provided parking calculations. I think the, the calculation that drives the required amount of parking is actually the auditorium, uh, the sports fields facility. Um, so in this case, it, in reality, even it was good that they confirmed what it is the space is going to be, but in reality. Even if they were adding students, that's not going to drive the maximum required parking uh calculation for this, in this situation. Yeah.
Thank you.
I do want to touch on um. Comment number seven here as well. There's no, there's no traffic impact also with this um, with this application. Um, no new student enrollment, no new facility and staff, so um. The traffic will remain the same, therefore there's no need for a traffic study. Uh, I do want to talk about stormwater management comment number nine. That's on page two. Infiltration testing. We need to test the soils to understand how well that stormwater management system will work. Uh, we didn't have time to do that before the school year started and we don't want to do it in a way that disrupts the the functions that happen on campus. So we are proposing to do that in March. We'll conduct that soils testing in March, confirm that our design works. If if the soils are not as good as what we, we assumed a very um, you know, conservative rate, a very low rate for the soils. The soils aren't as good as we thought. Maybe the basin needs to get bigger, but um, we will confirm that in March and uh. Be able to finalize the design then or confirm that the design works. One other comment I did want to touch on is, sorry, on uh, in night, comment nineteen on page three. ENS controls. Um, an important part of this project is to make sure that sentiment doesn't leave the site during construction. Uh, it's an active site. It's close to a residential neighborhood. We don't want that sentiment to leave the site. I believe the best way to determine the, the most effective uh methods for that is to really work side by side with the general and site contractor. To select those very specific methods. So we're going to engage in a conversation with them and then revise the plan to very clearly describe our ENS uh controls and techniques on the revised plan. The last engineering comment I wanted to touch on is twenty-four C, just on the last page of the Penone letter. And again, this really speaks to no new population increase, no new student enrollment, therefore uh, there's no need for a um. A sewer, uh sewer planning module, excuse me. We will ask for an accept, uh, an exception. From sewer planning from DEP and we'll document that with the township as well. The only other comment I wanted to touch on was in, was in the arborist's letter. And just wanted to clarify that no trees are being removed by this project. Therefore, there are no replacement trees required. I think there was some confusion in some of our notes that it, it seemed as if there was some replacement trees, but there are no trees being removed. Uh, there is landscaping proposed, but that's because of the building additions. Um, so we, I've already spoken to uh the arborist about that and we will clarify that from the revised plans. Those were the, really the only comments I wanted to talk about uh and touch on. If there's others that you folks want to uh. Get into, I'm sure I'm more than happy to discuss those and if they open it up to questions.
I will. I, I would like to clarify again about the origin control.
Yes.
So what exactly did you say that uh you will provide uh? Another different origin control plan after getting the approval. Eric, how would that work?
Uh, I think we're seeking some additional clarification, just uh, just looking ahead to make sure that uh. Uh, and really it kind of gets down to it's the staging of this project. So uh, they have disturbed area and then eventually that is, that that is going to be drained towards the basin. But in the various stages of construction, you have the base is sealed off. Just want to make sure that they are adequately um. Putting the controls in place to make sure the ENS uh and and stormwater is dealt with uh during the course of construction. Uh, and that, that, I'll just take the form of some additional details on the plan.
Eric, did you have any sort of other or any of the ones they mentioned or did you want to comment on? Uh, that are maybe a little stickier, you have, or or just kind of.
Uh, no, we, they touched on the uses of the building to clarify as a parking and or traffic. I take, we're not taking objection to what they were discussing. Um, other than that, just looking for some uh other plans, like some additional contour information. Uh, just to ensure that in the back parking that area, again, that's just adding some information to the plan. Uh, I guess the only question that. As I was looking at the back parking lot is noticing, and maybe you can comment on, there's the dumpsters that are sitting in the back parking lot. Are they being modified or changed in location or anything? As part of this? I think temporarily during construction, we'll have to figure out a new location for those two dumpsters back there. Um. But at the end of the project, I think they'll remain where they are. I didn't, I didn't have any other questions.
I had just one comment that I'd like to comment on. I, I think the one, the ones is Rick didn't comment on this because they're basically all will comply, all the, all the other ones. There is, there is one here. Though comment number twenty-four B, providing recreational land or fee of moving, if you turn into the app that will buy this, to develop it by the township. Section one forty-eight dash forty-one of the subdivision. I've had this issue several times with, with the township solicitor with other schools and it is not applicable. And the, the reason is the uses to which. Recreational fee is applicable are residential, retail and general commercial, office and industrial, but not institution. Rich has ruled that way previously and we'll, we'll go with his determination, but that's what he's consistently.
Okay. I mean, is there any public comment? You, do we have a microphone up there? If it's your name and address, please.
So on the, on the plan. Okay, if I stepped up and sort of pointed here.
Can you locate where they live?
Yeah.
Building addition. Parts of the existing lights. There are two lights.
Oh, there's two lights on the. Look at that. Rest that.
What's your corner? But it's okay with this.
Yes, sure.
The lights, this is a Jake Cadino, Director of Operations.
House is right here. Which is also over here. Lights in question were. Which is also over here, the lights in question were lights that were restored on this corner. That corner right there. Well, how I like that.
Perhaps you can choose them, that's it, perhaps you can shield them.
Just to be clear, there's no new lighting proposed as part of the project, so this is the existing lighting in in a related area.
I I will say we've also committed to. Building based on a permanent application. Putting a barricade fence on this side here. We do want to impose. Many days and that's. Do add to our facility.
If the fencing and everything will help.
So the, the project doesn't propose any. Large parking lot lighting. There might be some very low level lighting in the courtyard added, you know, this is just ground level lighting. But as far as existing lighting, we haven't done, I haven't done an analysis. Those lights that, that Jake had mentioned on the outside of the building, but. But Jake wants to work residents of all that. Good, thank you.
My name's Rich Gugan, my wife and I live at one thirty three on. I guess I'm here about number three on the list of issues waiting. One seventy two dash one twenty nine. That number three.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
And. Yeah, there's the the lane. That Jake said, I think they they demand it next week, but. Our backyard, I can go out at one, one A M and have a catch my son football.
And that's as a result of the action taken last week?
Yes, it it's been about a week. Probably, but Jake is a good guy, I support him a hundred percent. One other time we had an issue and he was right on top of it, he promised that he would alleviate the issue. And I trusted.
I think it 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 seems like more an enforcement issue in terms of the lighting burdens that the township has generally, since there's no new lighting. As part of the plan.
Well, it is new light. I mean, it's, you know, it's like an L O D old.
It's not part of a development plan. We're just saying this is not the right. You can get it, there are people to address it, that's just not something that we would have got. Yeah, it was just confirming that there's nothing new.
Yeah, but what number three says is that. Based on what they're doing, the township does not require any additional lighting. And they're confirming that there is no additional lighting required.
Right, I think that would be, that's part of that land development, that's, uh, they're not having.
Your issue would arise under.
I support Jake, you know, and one other issue, he was right on top of it, so I trust that he'll take care of it.
I'm sure they're happy to keep working with you.
Any applicant would be happy to have the neighbors coming and supporting him.
Yes.
I don't.
So I'm reading this, are there any, any more public comment, I'm sorry. Or is your intent to come back, I'm just, I'm just looking at the letter and how to do a motion where. You know, we'll comply, doesn't seem to fit well, just with the way the text is written. Well, without doing a twenty minute motion kind of thing.
Looked for was a motion to recommend approval. Uh, subject to satisfactory resolution of all the staff review. That's, you know, that's what.
Because he's asking for doing preliminary.
Right, I'm just.
I mean, that, that's the way it's been done here for years and years, years and years, as long as I can remember. And and most of the other places, not, not just.
No, I mean, I, I don't, I mean, we've done it and I'm not, I'm just reading the actual text that like.
Which one?
Well, I'm just trying to make sure that the the concept of. Um, you'll address it to the. Approval of our engineer actually fits with the way the engineer wrote it, you know, that we we don't get any kind of. I mean, if you wrote it, so you might have a feel for that, I'm just.
I I wrote it and I've had conversations with the applicant, I I really don't have any, um, concerns in any comments being addressed. Uh, and and pretty much addressing them is going to, uh, have some additional. Details add to the plan, but nothing of real.
Okay, yeah, I'm just.
And and basically the supervisor, you're inside the plant until he says everything's fine, and not everything that we're supposed to.
But yeah, I just want to make sure we don't have a conflict that kind of comes back, that's all. Um, any additional comments from the board? Somebody want to make a motion? I can make a motion or someone else can. I'll make a motion that we recommend. Uh, approval of the plan as presented, subject to the applicant. Addressing. The comments in the Pinoni letter dated December seventeenth, twenty twenty two. Uh, to the satisfaction of the township engineer. Uh, noting that they're requesting, uh, two waivers. The first of which is. A waiver from one forty eight dash thirteen, allowing them to do a combined preliminary and final plan. And then a second waiver request from one forty eight dot dash forty three dot B. Uh, print for, well, high density polyethylene pipe in lieu of reinforced concrete. And, uh. I'll check.
I think the fire worship would use, uh, one twenty eight, uh, twenty two fire worship.
Yeah, and, and subject to any applicable. Um, comments from the township arborist. Uh, based on, uh, their email dated November twenty eighth, twenty twenty two. And then addressing to the satisfaction of the, uh, fire marshal. Uh, any issues, and particularly those noted in his letter, November twenty eighth, twenty twenty two.
And I think, uh, you know, you like also.
Hold the second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose the motion, say nay. Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Have a good holiday.
Yeah, thank you.
Whichever it might be. And then we have a couple other items, and 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 I'm assuming these are just informational.
That's a good idea.
Yeah. Nice job. So to Garrett Williamson. Put on hold, veronomin. Applicant is waiting for response from township engineer and then sawmill development. Uh, they're heading to zoning, uh, next month. We have any additional business? Uh, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
All in favor of adjourned, say aye, I oppose.